Ready, Matthew? Matt? Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Meeting on this day, thirteenth of April, nineteen twenty-two, nineteen, wow, twenty twenty-two at six P. M. I'd like to call the meeting to order and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, everyone. I'm going to make a slight change to the agenda. We have a special presentation. Excuse me. Let's do the roll call first, please, and then walks my counselor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor Alex Johnson.
Here.
Counselors Smith.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Novak.
Here.
Artholomew.
Kupczynski.
Here.
And Bessie Johnson.
Here.
All members present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Gabe. Next, I'm going to do a slight change to the agenda. We have a special presentation by the city manager and myself, and then from that, we're going to make another change after the proclamation.
J.C., can I get you to come forward, please? Good evening. I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize somebody for some pretty good work, strong work. J.C. Rowley, right now, is our deputy finance manager, finance director, and when he got here, he jumped right away into quite a bit of work. He's brought a level of rigor and discipline into our financial management that we're all grateful for and will benefit from for a long time. Sadly, we're having to say goodbye to J.C. He's taken a position as the finance director in Grants Pass, Oregon. So our loss is their big gain. And I have to, you know, I have to, again, recognize all that you've done for us. We took on a new financial system called Munis, which was a multi-year project. You can imagine when you're talking about payroll, you're talking about finances, you're talking about utility billing. This was a big project. All of this in the middle of a pandemic as well. There was quite a bit more that J.C. did with implementation of the city services fee, with reorganizing our consolidated annual financial report, and many things, too many to really list. But I wanted to say thank you, J.C., offer the mayor a chance as well, and when he's done, I've got something to give you.
J.C., thank you very much for your dedication to the city of Albany. Do appreciate the work you've done on behalf of this city. Wish you the best, well, somewhat the best, in Grants Pass as you move forward, but when you do ever get a chance to come up and visit with us. And thank you very much for dedication to Albany, and I'll turn it back over to people.
So on your desk in Grants Pass, we expect you to display the highly coveted coin of the city of Albany, okay? So the way we would do this in the military is I'd take that coin and I'd put it in my hand.
So next on the agenda is a proclamation for Crime Victims Rights Week, April twenty-fourth through thirtieth of, um, thirtieth April. Crime Victims Rights Week. Whereas in nineteen eighty-two, the president's task force on victims of crime envisioned a national commitment to a more equitable and supportive response to victims and whereas the this commemorative week celebrates the energy, perseverance, and commitment that launched the Victims' Rights Movement, inspired its progress, and continues to advance the cause of justice for crime victims and whereas the rights of crime victims are best protected when all participants in the criminal justice process, not only victims are appropriately informed and educated about victims' rights and whereas honoring the rights of victims, including the right to be heard and to be treated with fairness, dignity, and respect rebuilds their trust in the criminal justice system and service system, social service systems and whereas victims should be able to find support, recovery, justice, and a sense of hope for their future and whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to commit to offering accessible, appropriate, and trauma-informed services to all victims of crime and whereas the city of Albany is dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors, building resilience in our communities and our victim services providers, and bringing hope and healing to all victims and survivors. Now, therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the city of Albany, do hereby proclaim the week of April twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, I keep jumping ahead, as Crime Victims Rights Week in Albany, Oregon. I encourage all residents to join in its observance. In witness whereof, I here to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Albany to be affixed this thirteenth day of April, twenty twenty-two. Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor. Next on the agenda is public hearings. Nope, excuse me, business from the public. We're going to move that up ahead because the public hearings will be pretty long. So can you bring me the sheet, the sign-in sheet? So we have two individuals that sign up to speak with Michael Quinn. Please come to podium, take your, take the seat. Mike, is your mic on?
Can you hear me?
They write up on it.
On it. Okay, you want me to do it again?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm Michael Quinn, Q-U-I-N-N. My primary residence is forty-five Sunset Ridge Drive, Albany, Oregon. I'm here tonight for guys who are going to get a grant, as I would call it, for a million dollars for homelessness in Albany. And if reading and watching what Carvalis Benton County slash Benton County is doing, they're already talking about potentially gaining some more staff, making staff and everything else. I'm here to make a suggestion on a million dollars. We have a professional group here in Albany that's very well acquainted with homelessness, and it's Helping Hands. And I've actually talked to some of the staff here about the fact of what they're doing over in Benton and Carvalis. The fact of hiring staff, they don't want to do that here, or they're going to attempt not to. Next year, then, you're going to have to, from what I'm understanding, that if you hire somebody and they're on staff, you go to try to fund them next year and you don't have it, you're going to have to find the money in that because part of the federal gig on it. Need to really research that. But as you know, that Helping Hands right now, they have done very well the last couple of years, money in the bank, just a couple of grants being written. I think a couple of you know about the transitional housing project that they've wanted to do for ten years, up to forty-eight units. And this would be a great down payment. And I really think that you could technically, to make it a proving point, to catapult them into really looking at this because it's a lot of legislative stuff, monies left over and everything else, that if we held that money in lieu of, I don't know if the government's going to say you have to spend it like they usually do in the mask, but if you could hold on to that to give them a down payment because to hire staff, to have somebody come up here and say, hey, you know what? Want to be able to, you know, have somebody here tell us how to do it. Guys are well-tracked. I mean, their motto is not a handout, it's a hand up. And I think that we should all kind of potentially back this and put the brakes on before we start having staff try to figure out what to do. That's number one. Number two, I'm here as a builder about the Parks SDC situation. I can remember talking with the old Parks Director about the fact that the way that the park system was being ran now, very efficiently and stuff, and SDC money coming in. We have a substantial amount of gains here recently. Half million dollars or so. Now we're talking about potentially buying a property in South Albany. I would really like to see you guys put the brakes on, potentially. And if you really needed to buy that property, why don't we sell the property that everybody wants to talk about? That's right out on the tracks on North Albany Road that we quarter million dollars over. That up here, and the only person I know that here. And I would say that, oh, we've got that big park space. We wanted to, you were our councilman, we wanted to potentially turn that into a soccer field complex and stuff. Nothing ever happened. I just don't see how putting a park in South Albany when you have Deerfield totally unused. I mean, it's underused, that place out there. And for capital improvement projects, statute and stuff, you can actually take SDC parks. So before we go start charging an SDC and indexing them here by July first, I really talk about.
Good. Thank you, Mike. Clear me if I'm wrong. I believe the property down in South Albany, we already own. Is that correct?
We already own it, and if anything, what Parks Director was talking about was sell that. But we're not proposed to buy any property.
Yeah, that's what we talked about Monday night. That's our property already. You want it in South Albany? That's the city of Albany property.
No, not the
No, South Albany property. That's ours. That's, we own that.
So you own both properties now?
Yes.
So you're wanting to sell both properties or just one?
Well, I want to understand from the city manager and staff, it was just the one in South Albany eventually.
The issue on Monday night was annexation of the property that the city owns in South Albany. That was it. It's premature to talk about selling it, although that's certainly an option, or turning part of it into a park. There was no, there was no talk about purchasing any property.
What are we talking about indexing?
Again, that's a different issue. The SDCs are a different issue, and there's a discussion of SDCs coming.
That wasn't on the night's agenda at all.
So they're not, those two are not linked?
No.
It came across that they were, but I mean, even still, with, you know, we'd really like, the building community would like to know why we're indexing it. We had really great building, I mean, a Parks Director that said we don't need to. I mean, I mean, one or these other, both these properties are still up for sale. I mean, we paid two and a quarter million dollars for the North Albany thing, way, I mean, three times the amount of money that we were supposed to pay for and stuff. And so it's kind of like go down in that on purchases. Got three and a half million in the kitty from Parks SDC's account, right?
Yeah, we weren't talking about buying or anything right now, so we're going to talk about SDCs in a future meeting. It's on the whiteboard.
Is there a real, can I just have a real short thirty second? Why would we be talking about? There's got to be a dialogue.
Peter?
Question there, Mike?
Question. Why are, then, why are we talking?
The SDCs came up as a discussion when the Parks Master Plan was being also come up as a discussion as part of the housing of task force. That has, has nothing to do with the property in South Albany.
I'm on that task force. We did discuss that.
We're not even, we're not, we're not at that point in the road yet to, to be having that discussion yet.
Right. Because then it sounds like we're getting ahead of our task force, too, then.
Thank you. So Jeff, I need to read this preamble before you come up. I should have done it before, Mike, Mr. Quinn, so sorry. Directions, for Business from the Public, directions to how to testify and submit written materials which are published in the council agenda. We receive written testimony from an individual. Jeff De La Rosa was going to speak with us, and also Anne Pelletier and Barbara Crocte? Crocte regarding library fines, and Jeff De La Rosa asked to speak to the council, and so did Mr. Quinn. Jeff, you're up.
First, I want to say thank you for time to express. My name is Jeff De Rosa. Burrows Court Subdivision. Southwest. Adjacent to my property facility that is located A.B.C. Professional Plaza, some of you. Dr. Reitmer's office was back there. So YMCA was issued a conditional childcare facility in the old A.B. out of here. That specifies that the, one of the that is that the facility cannot change the characteristics, piece character of the neighborhood. My home is about two backyard facing in that direction. Facility, I met with the CEO of YMCA and he said they put up a steel structure, outside plate, and that immediately amplified the noise to the point that my wife and I didn't go to the backyard anymore. Audio anomaly. Additionally, my neighbor, an elderly woman, she's seventy-seven years old, she's on a walker, knows she's going to end up in a about twenty up at her sliding glass door out under patio. She doesn't go outside. Said the noise unbearable, but it's I don't mean to sound callous adamant, but they scream and holler and they emulate wolves and sirens and dogs and cats. And when this lights up, our dogs are all, our peace is gone. We personally, we have Great Danes, but we're very mindful big dogs can have a bark. We purchased hundred-dollar collars, and because these kids makes dogs bark, injured our dogs, so now we take the collars off, dogs live. So it changed the characteristics of our life. Mayor Johnson, I appreciate you coming by last week and listening to backyard term that it was enough to be servants. Have recordings. If we simply open the slider and hold our cellphone up where there's decibel meter on there, and it pegs eighty about fifty with closed, anybody takes a reading, you know, a blender up in that. I'm asking the city council to urge the planning commission to take a look at this additional debt and observe noise that's and request that the YMCA make changes to quiet it all. Especially
Thank you, sir. And I do appreciate you allowing me to come visit with you and your wife at your residence, and it was quite loud in your, inside the house.
Yes.
And it was, it was quite loud. And would city manager like to comment, please?
Well, you know, Chris Shindel, our code compliance officer, has been down there and he is purchasing, we do not actually have a decibel meter, but he's purchasing one and he'll be taking readings there. But we'll, we will, I don't know if you want to go to the planning commission, we can certainly have the planning commission look at it, but it sounds to me like you'd like action to happen a little sooner than that, if possible. So we'll, we're on it and we're actively talking about it on the staff to see what we can as a remedy.
What remedy?
Well, I, I really, I can't, I haven't even talked to the actually, I should say, the remedy belongs to the YMCA. It's their, it's their facility and it's their permit. So we just have to get all those ducks in a row.
I have a grave concern because it's affecting the health of my wife. I work in Eugene, so I leave the house of course. Yes, but on the days that I work from home, this is interesting, take a zoom shop in my backyard, and I have guys on the call ask me, hey, tell your kids to go play in the other end of the house. It's about a hundred and eighty stop. So oftentimes, I don't go in the house, I'll go out in my driveway, sit in my hall, so that it's loud enough. And so back to my wife's health. She's not sleeping at night because, again, I'm gone in the morning, so she knows at eight o'clock when she sliding glass door out to do their business and get water, that she's going to hear the screaming and councillor talked about putting her garden in, and we have a greenhouse in our backyard. Watson. Anybody need go, I'd ask serious consideration and urging of Y to take care of us until this point. Anonymous donor to the Y, because I believe in what and with a high cost of housing, I know both parents have to work. Kids need a place safe and contained. I all believe it's my town, but I feel like I'm being, as second-class citizen hard, spoken to the Y, spoken to board members on all gone dark on me. I think there's an order, probably not
Thank you, Jeff. So Peter Trottson, the city manager, and Officer Shindel will be addressing that, and they'll bring back something to us. And again, I appreciate your patience and I appreciate what you guys are going through. I was there and I heard the noise, and it was quite disturbing to me as well. And also, as an advocate for seniors in our community, I feel for the woman that lives next door to you, because I know that's a very important her peace and quiet is very important to her. So thank you. All right, that's it for Business from the Public. I'm going to move on now to the public hearings for Honey Grove Project, CP zero four twenty-one, comma, Z zero four two one, SD zero nine two one, and SP thirty-one dash twenty-one. And David Martino, and so four through two hundred and ninety-one. Two hundred and ninety-one in your packet.
Mr. Mayor, if I may interrupt for a second before David Martino starts speaking, but for David and for anybody else speaking, if you could really pull that mic close to your lips and try to refrain from moving your head back and forth, because apparently the mics are pretty sensitive only as long as you keep your mouth, your voice close to the mic.
How's this? That, that's really good. Thank you. So next on the agendas, our agenda is quasi judicial public hearing regarding planning file CP zero four two one, Z zero two four two one, C, SD zero nine two one, and SP thirty-one dash twenty-one. The proposal is for a comprehensive plan map and zoning map amendment together with a residential zoning, residential development proposal specific to one fourteen dash, fourteen dot eighteen dash, what's fourteen, what's? Fourteen, well, zone one fourteen dash eight point eighteen acre property inside city limits. The development plan includes forty-one single-family lots intended for detached residential dwellings and one large lot intended for a multifamily residential and one hundred and twenty-one attached apartment units. I call the order the quasi judicial hearing, public hearing, and at six twenty-three P. M. If you wish to testify, there will be three options available, which were described on the agenda. Do any members of which to declare a conflict of interest? Hearing none. Do any members wish to report and exportate contact? I would like to report that I have talked with Matt Konzer for years. So I've known the Konzer family since nineteen ninety-four, and we have talked about this project. Do any members wish to visit a site, reported site visit?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry. This is Bessie, and I have, I go by there quite often. I've looked at it on my way to and from Home Depot and stuff, and so I'm very aware of where it is. So just wanted to let people know.
Okay. Thank, anyone else?
Same for me.
And so same with, I used to live on Rice Street, right around the corner from that place, and just recently there was an oil, somebody dumped some oil in a lot right across from that property. And I made a video and I sent it to Director Bailey, and we got the oil cleaned up with a, with a short order, but I was out there right, right adjacent to that property. Anybody else? Nobody else. Do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? Okay. Does any member wish to challenge the city council's right to determine this matter or the participation of any council member in the hearing and decision? If so, please raise your hand, and if you are attending in person, if you are attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. Or if you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name, and so you can be called on. Nobody virtually? Okay, great. At this time, I call for the reading of the meeting procedures.
For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issues. If you later want to raise that issue on appeal, testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards the staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court.
Excellent. At this time, I call for a staff report from project planner David Martino.
Okay, thank you very much. Here, let me get started.
You ready?
Okay, I think we're on now. So this is the Honey Grove Project. There's four concurrent applications here being considered tonight. There's a comprehensive plan amendment, a zone change amendment, subdivision, and a site plan review for multifamily housing. So the property here is fourteen point eighteen acres on the east side of Three Lakes Road, just south of the Three Lakes Estates Manufactured Home Park. So in summary of the proposal, we have a comprehensive plan map amendment change for fourteen point eighteen acres from low-density residential to medium-density residential together with a zoning map amendment, which would change the zone, the current zone is RS six point five, it would change it to RM, which is medium-density residential. There's then a land division to create forty-one single dwelling lots in a large tract, and then finally, a one hundred and twenty unit multifamily development. So the review criteria is listed here on the slide. Comprehensive plan amendment review criteria is found in ADC two point two two oh sub three. Zoning map amendments are in the same code, two point seven four oh. Land divisions, eleven point one eighty. Land divisions, 11.180. Cluster development, 11.440. And then finally, site plan review, which is in 2.450. So the public, or public agency notices went out December 3 of 2021. The notice of public hearing was sent February 18, 2022, and then the property was posted on March 7. The planning commission voted to recommend approval at their March 14, 2022 meeting. Their recommendation is what you're considering tonight. So next, we'll take a look here at the proposed comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments. So the current comprehensive plan map designation for the property is low-density residential. This designation identifies areas predominantly suited for detached, single-family homes, as well as middle housing development. The request is to designate the entire property of low-density residential to medium-density residential. That planned designation identifies areas that are suitable for multifamily development at densities between 25 and 35 units per acre. The comprehensive plan designation must become medium-density residential in order for the RM zoning to be permitted. This map amendment and zone change addresses the need for medium-density housing, and it implements a land supply strategy identified by the city's 2020 Housing Needs Analysis. This Housing Needs Analysis identifies a proposed RM zone as suitable for addressing the city's housing needs, and therefore, the proposed RM zoning district is more supportive of the applicable comprehensive plan goals and policies. So as you see on this map here, what we're looking at is a clustered subdivision. So we have 41 lots that are proposed, with an average minimum lot size of 3,500 square feet. Then there would be an additional lot that's created, a tract really, that then becomes Lot 42, which would be the lot where the multifamily development would go. There's also three open space tracts here, and that's where you get the cluster division, subdivision, you can set aside lands from development. So you can protect, say, wetlands or riparian corridor areas, and also provide some areas for stormwater quality treatment. So the subject property, again, is 14.18 acres, and the cluster development standards would require a set aside of 2.8 acres of natural features. This proposed development will actually set aside 3.41 acres of natural features, which amounts to 24% of the development site. So the Honey Grove Project also includes 120 apartment units that are spread across 10 three-story residential buildings. Each apartment unit will have two bedrooms. This development requires 210 parking spaces and 30 bicycle parking spaces. Minimum open space requirements in the RM zone is 15% of the total site area, and those would be subject to standards in Article 8. So this map here shows the areas that are being considered for common open space. To comply with the standard, they're setting aside about 25,000 square feet is open lawn, 5,600 square feet is children's play area, 1,900 square feet for an indoor community room, and then 800 square feet for a sports court. So in conclusion, all the applicable criteria are met or met with conditions. We recommend approval of the combined comprehensive plan map and zoning map amendment, land division, and site plan review. And so I am available for questions, and the applicant is here tonight as well, and he would like to say some words.
So do any council members have clarifying questions regarding the staff report? Hearing none.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I just, I just have one question.
Go ahead.
On, everything's been met, but I, I don't know if this is a time for the question or not, but the properties on the southwest, I just wondered if they go right out on to Three Lakes Road?
On the east side of Three Lakes Road, are you speaking of?
On the east side of Three Lakes Road, yes. But I just wondered, do they go right on to the, the road, the driveways go right up to the road?
I think she's asking, is there an entryway onto Three Lakes Road from the property?
There you go. Thank you.
Uh, no, not presently. One would be developed during the subdivision process.
So ingress, ingress will be addressed during that process?
Yes.
Counselor Smith has a question.
Thank you.
Clarifying question for what Council Johnson asked. Council Johnson, were you asking about the single-family lots that are on the south, the southwest corner of the property below the?
Yeah, that, that little area that is just, is just sitting there by itself and looks like there's greenway or something in between. So I was just wondering if
If they have individual driveways that go onto Three Lakes Road?
Exactly. Yes, thank you.
Well, I'd be certain that they do, because they're not, you know, using the Honey Grove site to get in and out. So what we're seeing there is probably landscaping that they have in their front lawn. We can certainly verify that, though.
Thank you.
You guys comfortable with that, counsel? You go clarifying that? Okay. Thank you. Any other, any other questions of the staff? David?
No.
Okay. And so now, we will now hear, take testimony from the applicant. Will the applicant please state your name, address, and make any comments you may have for the counsel?
Good evening.
Yeah, the whole thing, yeah.
Good evening. Is that okay?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Konzer. My family and I own the property and we are the applicants. My address is 1010 Airport Road, Southeast Albany, Oregon 97322. I am a resident of Albany. We'd like to thank you for hearing us tonight. We'd also like to thank city staff. They've been helpful, informative, responsive, and reasonable. We've developed projects in many cities and you have an excellent team here. We agree with the staff report, we agree with the planning commission and their unanimous recommendation for approval by the city council. We believe we meet or exceed all the many criteria for which to approve this application, which is approving of achievable homes for many Albany residents and families. Our family's been around here a long time. In fact, my great-great-great-grandfather, Jacob Konzer, came to Oregon in 1848 and founded the city of Jefferson, Oregon in 1850. He built his home there in 1854, which home is still standing. That home also served as a hotel for weary travelers. He built the first ferry across the Saniam River there and the first bridge. He provided shelter to strangers and safe passage across the river. Our family has tried to continue that legacy. We've been entrepreneurs in this region for six generations now. We're proud of our heritage and want to continue that legacy of building quality projects here and homes which last. My dad, who's present here tonight, my brothers and I have been in the real estate development and housing industry in this area for two generations, and we're training the third generation now. We're pleased and fortunate to have been involved in some significant projects here in Albany. Our dad, Jim, built Columbus Greens Manufactured Home Park, which used to be called Nelson Village. He also assembled all the land for which is now the Heritage Mall. He also served on the Albany City Council, and my brother Greg served on the planning commission. For many years, we were in the manufactured home business, where we sold, financed, and installed about 1,000 manufactured homes throughout Oregon. We built the first modern subdivision in Tangent, called Lone Oka Estates. We built the first modern subdivision in Millersburg, Sweetwater Estates, and then Morningstar. And we built the first modern subdivision in North Albany, Laura Vista Acres. And you may recognize the streets we started there, White Cliff, Dover, Essex. We brought Lowe's to town during the last Great Recession, creating about 150 new jobs. Our mayor of Albany, Alex Johnson, told me we were the first landlord to rent to he and his family when they came to Albany back in the early 90s. And we're so glad he chose to stay and live here. We've been providing homes for Oregon citizens for decades. We've recently built the first new apartments in Philomath since 1978, a much-needed addition to their housing supply. We've developed projects in Salem, Marion County, McMinnville, Jefferson, Lebanon, Carvallos, Philomath, et cetera. And we're glad to be back here in Albany, our hometown. And so why are we here? Again, we believe we meet or exceed all the criteria for which to approve this application. We feel we are directly addressing the need, as documented in the city's Housing Needs Analysis, and the buildable lands inventory. Being in the housing industry for decades, we know that Albany and Oregonians are now actually in a housing crisis. The nation, this region, is in a housing crisis brought on by a shortage of supply. Years of not enough new housing being built has led to very little inventory for sale and caused historically high rents. Worse yet, it's been during a period or an era of historically low interest rates, which is a great time for consumers to buy and finance a home. According to Eco Northwest, the consultants who provided the state of Oregon, its new middle, its new, its new Housing Needs Analysis, which analysis brought on the new middle housing laws you're familiar with, Oregon is the 49th most under-produced state for housing units. Only the state of Maine is worse. And who's moving to Maine? Oregon is the 41st worst cost burden state, 41st out of 50 states. Cost burden is where more than 30% of a person's income is going out for housing. Hawaii is 50th. You can imagine why Hawaii is, is last. There's little housing there for locals because the homes are vacation rentals. So why is it so bad in Oregon? Sadly, according to the State Home Builders Association, this area is only seeing about 55% of the housing supply, which was historically constructed in this area from about 70 to the mid 2000s. Supply shortage here is the worst in the nation. Unaffordable city, in fact, Salem, Albany, Carvallos are some of the most unaffordable cities in the entire nation. According to the National Association of Home Builders, Wells Fargo Housing Opportunity Index, which is an annual study where they compare the ability of a median-income family to buy a median-priced home, excuse me, in 236 MSAs, metro areas measured across the nation, Carvallos is the last on affordability nationwide. For a median-income family to buy a median-priced home, Carvallos is dead last, 236th. Salem is 205th. Albany is 196th of 236. Frankly, there's nothing to be proud of there.
That's fact.
According to our own state's Housing Needs Analysis, again, our state needs about 584,000 more housing, and it's just to get to market equilibrium in the next 20 years. Market equilibrium is a six-month supply of homes for sale and a 5% vacancy rate. In this area, there's only about a two-week supply of homes for sale, and basically, there's zero vacancy. With waiting lists for rental units, multiple applicants competing for when they do become vacant. The Willamette Valley alone needs about 102,000 of those housing units. And we all know people who'd like to sell, move, upgrade, downsize, but they're afraid to. Because they know they have no place to go, nothing to replace it with. These facts are shocking. The scale of the need is staggering. The situation is tough. So what do we do? We need action. Not paralysis from analysis. We Oregonians, we really need to double our production. We need to triple our production for low and moderate-income Oregonians if we ever want to begin to solve the problem. Moreover, we may need to rethink or reevaluate how things are done or not done. Again, the solution, the key, is more supply. It's simple economics. Now I want a screen share here.
There we go.
Doing it?
Yes.
Great. See if this works at all. Working? Yeah. Did it work on that at all?
I see it on the wall.
Yeah. Sorry, Peter, if I point this at you. Close your eyes, just in case. So maybe we'll use a cursor here. So what I always want to talk about the specifics of the project now. Our primary access comes from Three Lakes Road on the north, and you probably see Three Lakes Road written on here. We're coming in the north, so we have a very limited impact on the wetlands. We have an emergency-only reciprocal access to and from Three Lakes Manufactured Home Community. That's over here by lots 10, or 11, and 12, at the farthest right cul-de-sac. We're creating a 58-foot rideaway, a new city street with on-street parking called Zachary Street. And then the private streets within the apartment site, the streets within the apartment site will be private. There we go. Okay. So we're providing various housing types at this project. We plan to build 41 single-family homes. These are examples of homes which have been built and very well-received in many Willamette Valley cities. Newburgh, McMinnville, Woodburn, Salem, Forest Grove, et cetera, et cetera, all have these. These are entry-level, achievable price point, 1,200 to 1,600 square foot, very tasteful designs with quality features, attractive welcoming exteriors, built with modern building materials to today's strict building and energy code, which dictates they'll be highly energy-efficient. Although on modest-sized lots, they will have nice rear yards, not an alley for a backyard. They are detached homes for a reason, not townhomes, so they don't have shared common walls and the issues that come with sharing common walls. We plan to build 120 market-rate apartments. These are two-bedroom, two-bath apartment homes we've built in many other nearby cities. The neighborhood will have onsite amenities like a clubhouse, fitness center, sport court, playground, dog park, and a huge preserved open space, which most of the units will back up to. These are not low-income apartments. They will be market-rate apartments, which will be locally managed and maintained by concert entities. Diversified property management will provide onsite management. Concert maintenance will provide other services to the tenants. There are some specific capital and infrastructure improvements needed for this project. I want to highlight these. I'm here to tell you, this is not an easy site to develop, which is why it's been passed over many times. It requires significant public improvements, which get funded and built by the developer, us. It requires a very long, deep sewer main extension from Ry Street to Three Lakes, and that's the green line here. So it goes from this industrial, there's a manhole over there, and it goes down Three Lakes Road. We're calling that the million-dollar sewer line. It's 20 feet deep. The project wires requires a water main extension for Three Lakes Manufactured Home Community to our property's south border, which is the red line. Then we'll be doing street frontage improvements, wider street, curb, gutter, sidewalk, street trees on our side of the street, which is the yellow line. And because of all this deep utility construction, Three Lakes Road will most likely be doing culvert repair, or most likely replacement on Three Lakes Road, which will be, which will be taking direction from public works on what's best there. And that's the blue oval. And replacing those culverts is already in the city's 2019 stormwater master plan. More importantly, we intend to raise the grade of Three Lakes Road to make it more passable in a heavy rain event. If you've driven to Home Depot, Betsy, there's, high water comes across the street there. We intend to fix that. So we do not intend to impede the water, which currently and historically has flowed through the site. And the apartment property will continue to own and maintain the drainage, wetland, open space tract, and therefore, it will be, it will not be for onsite detention and our water quality treatment train. This process is regulated and permitted by several federal and state agencies, as well as the city of Albany. We plan to mimic the current stormwater flows from the site, and will pre-treat the water onsite before releasing it into the existing drainage system, with a plan, a goal, for a net-zero effect on the existing storm drainage. All these significant improvements open up the possibility for others to potentially extend and connect to city sewer and water further down Three Lakes Road to the south. This could very well lead to more job creation on the nearby industrial lands. Our goal has been to have as little possible environmental impact on the area. We are avoiding the wetlands delineated, this green area here, contained within the boundaries of that existing drainage, and if you've driven out there, that's the existing drainage filled with willows and other trees. We're leaving the trees within the wetland area screening and buffering and habitat. It's important to point out that this site is not in floodplain, but we will be raising the grade of our site a little so we can drain it and detain it and treat our stormwater. And the total wetland area on this site is 3.41 acres of the 14.18 acre site. That's 24% of the entire property. That's about 148,000 square feet of wetland area. Our permanent wetland impact is a meager 9,557 square feet. It's these two blue areas. And essentially have to make minor impacts to the wetland in order to get access to the site at the north boundary and to aid in creating more buildable lots to the south. This property has a clean archaeological report and survey. No archival history or artifacts were found on the property. No endangered plant species were found onsite. The soils are geotechnically sound for building said project. The property has no hazardous materials history, no contamination, and the site will be fenced to provide a buffer and screening to define the boundaries of our property. In conclusion, there are many reasons to approve this project application. We're in a housing crisis. Albany, Oregon are in desperate need of housing supply of all kinds of housing types. We are here tonight to answer the call, to bring forth more supply. We are avoiding 94% of the wetlands and preserving open space, which will be a very nice amenity to the homes, the community, and a benefit to the watershed. We believe we'll be making drainage improvements by raising the road grade, opening up the existing silted-up culverts. Hopefully, that makes Three Lakes Road more passable during heavy rain events and to not impede the water, which had previously historically drained through the site. Significant public improvements will be built, sewer capacity extension, water main extension, and street improvements will be completed benefiting the southeast Albany area and the greater community. Our application meets or exceeds the many various criteria needed for approval, and the public improvements are in many of the city's master plans already. Last but not least, staff, staff recommends approval of the application, and the planning commission gave us unanimous recommendation for approval to you, the city council. All these factors are what you look for in a good project proposal. So we ask that you approve it tonight, move it forward, so we can get to work soon. My team and I are available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now take public testimony, first from those in favor of the application, followed by those in opposition or with concerns, and finally from anyone who is neutral. If anyone wishes to enter the exhibit into the record as part of the testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and then email it to the email provided in the packet. Those who register to speak during the public meeting will now be called upon to present verbal testimony. Does anyone sign up to speak?
Up, Your Honor.
Okay, great. 14, we will now be taking public testimony from those who did not register to speak beforehand. If you like, would like to speak, please raise your hand if you're attending in person. If you're attending virtually, please turn on your cameras and raise your hand to be called upon, or if you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name to be called upon. Saying none, does any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of this application? Does any member of the audience wish to speak in opposition to explore, express concerns about the application? Does any member of the audience wish to speak neutrally about, of the application? Does the applicant have any rebuttal testimony? I'm guessing not. Okay. Does anyone have the procedural questions that would like to raise at this time? If so, please raise your hand. If you're attending in person, if you're attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand or to be, to be called upon, or if you're attending on the phone, please unmute yourself and state your name to be called upon. I declare this public hearing closed at 6:54 PM. Does the city council wish to discuss the case or ask questions of the staff?
I have three questions, Your Honor.
Counselor Smith?
One question is, how do you define achievable entry-level pricing for the single-family homes and the, and the rental rates?
Is that meant for me or for the applicant?
That's meant for the applicant.
Okay, that was staff. Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that's a very good question. Achievable is subject, obviously.
Right.
Yeah, because there's folks online.
Can you hear me? Yeah. Could you restate your question?
How do you define achievable? How much are these houses going to cost?
What's gas going to cost next month?
I know.
If you, honestly, if I could tell you what lumber, or plywood, or fuel, or rebar would cost in a year from now when these houses are ready to deliver, I could probably tell you what they're going to sell for, but we don't have any idea. The things we do control are the price of the land and the size of the lots. So that's why we're seeking density here. We're not, that's why we're seeking the rezon is to go to smaller lots so we can divide the cost of this expensive infrastructure across more lots and thereby make achievable. The other thing we control is the size of the house. We're not going to build McMansions here. These are going to be an entry-level product for a reason.
Thank you. Question number two, because of the, the size of the infrastructure work needed, do you anticipate that Three Lakes Road will be closed at any time like Columbus was during the infrastructure improvements for Henshaw Farms?
Yes, it'd have to be closed.
Okay.
For what duration, I don't know. We do know that these are going to be summer weather improvements because we've been monitoring the water table out there. We have what are called peziodomers that are measuring the height of the water so we know when we can go out there and dig deep sewer without having to pump the trench constantly. So we know it's definitely a summer construction project. So that's our hope is to get approval and build that infrastructure this summer.
Okay. Editorial comment, people talk about wetlands that don't look like wetlands. These are sort of the poster child for wetland. That could be the definition in a dictionary when you say wetlands. It's wet out there. I was concerned about that when I saw the application to begin with, but I have to say that I believe you covered it extensively, and I think it was over 100 pages of graphs, charts, and plain old data explaining the, how the water would be dealt with in a two-year, five-year, 10-year, 25-year, and 100-year rain event. I read my packet.
It's quite impressive. It was very impressive.
Yeah. Ponds, pipes, catch basins, slope. I think, I'm impressed with, with that, and that was, that was my biggest concern about the development there because that's a, that's a wet spot. If, if this is approved, everything is okay, when would you anticipate starting construction?
Well, the infrastructure has to go in first, right? May come back to the council and ask that we get some building permits concurrently with the infrastructure construction. That's one of the bottlenecks, in my opinion statewide, is that often cities want to see all the infrastructure done, the plat recorded. You might get one building permit during that process. If those, if homes can be built concurrently with infrastructure being put in, save a ton of time and houses get delivered sooner. That's one of the statewide issues. So I may come back to the council and talk about that. Otherwise, the way it is currently, once the infrastructure is done, then we could start some foundations, and the build cycle on these homes is probably six months. So it'd be next summer.
Summer 23.
23. Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Oh, just one other comment. I'm glad that you brought up some of the information that you shared at the neighborhood meeting last fall, since the attendance was low despite the extensive mailing list that you used to notify neighboring property owners that this is underway. So that, it was in the packet, of course, I read that, but it was, this is a good way to share it with other people who may not go to that work. So thanks.
Thank, thank you. Counselor Johnson had her hand up. I'm going to go to her because she's virtual.
Mayor, before we do that, I'm looking through this mayor's, or the, your guide, and I'm trying to see, it looks like we're missing something here, and that is that there's nowhere for the, for the council to ask questions of the applicant on your guide.
Oh.
And so because of that, you closed the public hearing.
Oh, true.
And now we're, now we're actually getting more testimony submitted by the, the applicant. So we'll need to, if we're going to, if we're going to have a bunch of questions from council coming up, we'll probably-
Reopen the public hearing?
Yeah.
Counsel, would you want to reopen the public hearing so you can ask questions?
Yes.
I move reopen the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, attorney. We reopen the public hearing at 7:00 PM. Now, please ask your questions. Any other questions for the applicant?
Hope we have some more questions.
You're killing me. Okay.
Am I, am I on, Mayor?
Yes, you are. So Counselor Johnson had a question.
Thank you. I want to say too that I read every page of this, and I was really impressed with the detail of this presentation, and I was, I'm really amazed at the detail and what was put into this. I actually got down to the graphs, and I thought, oh, they just copied the pages so that it looks bigger. But I know everyone was different. But I really like the storm drainage that you have put in, and I think, or that you're going to put in. I think that's going to help, of course, get approval, but also for people wanting to buy there with all the storm drainage and the care taken to deal with all of that. I think that these are going to be very popular, and I just want to say that you, Matthew, excuse me, Mr. Conser, have done very well, and I am so for this development subdivision, or whatever you want to call it, because it's what we need, and so I thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Okay, I will now close the public hearing.
Check and make sure that nobody else is there.
This is for us to talk.
Well, it's still open, so you can-
Anybody else have anything?
Yeah.
Anyone else like to address the applicant? Okay. You have a question?
I, I don't actually have a question, and I know it might, I might at this point sound a little bit like a broken record, but I just want to say that I concur. When you made your opening statement, you said that everything that you had done was to either meet or exceed the necessary requirements, and you have well met and well exceeded, and I just want to throw in my two cents about how impressed I am. When it comes to a return, to see if we can speed things up a little bit, I hope we'll be able to do that, given in your introduction, the way you laid things out about where we stand and how desperately these homes are needed, I, I just commend you, and I hope we can move it along. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Once, twice, sold. I'll now close the public hearing at 7:00, 7:03 PM. Counsel, there is an ordinance for you and for consideration in the council packet. Would the city, would the city attorney read the ordinance in title only?
So before we do that, Mayor, there's a, on your purple handout, there's a motion to approve. There's three options. You have a motion to approve, motion to approve modifications, motion to-
Well, my packet says there's an ordinance. That's what it says.
There is, there is.
Okay.
But I, and I'm, and I'll read the ordinance, but I want to make sure we do this as well in case there's-
Okay.
Appeal, so.
Well, Counsel, there is an ordinance.
After the second reading, that it will be approved.
Yeah.
So I have to read it first time in title only?
Yeah. The city council, county, city attorney read it, council ordinance in title only?
Sure. An ordinance amending ordinance number 4836, which adopted the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan Map and amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map by amending the Albany Comprehensive Plan and zoning map and adopting findings for the property located at Lynn County Assessors Map Number 11S-03W-16, tax lot 2500.
That it? Would the council like, would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance and the second time in title only?
Yes.
I would move that the city attorney read the ordinance a second time in title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion passes?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 4836, which adopted the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan Map and amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map by amending the Albany Comprehensive Plan and zoning map and adopting findings for the property located at Lynn County Assessors Map Number 11S-03W-16, tax lot 2500.
Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Your Honor, could we look at, I don't know if everyone has the sheet in front of you, but for land use purposes on this, it would, there's, there's some sample motions that are, I don't know if they're on-
Yeah, it's the third page. Do you have it? Okay. Okay, so Counselor Johnson, you want to make the motion, or should I have Counselor Smith do it?
Yes, if someone else, because I do not have the purple sheet.
Okay.
I can read them all. Okay.
Go ahead.
Move, I move the city council adopt an ordinance that would approve-
Microphone.
I move the city council adopt an ordinance that would approve the land use application for annexation concurrent rezon to RS5 under planning files AN01-21 and ZC-03-21, as described in the March 7, 2022 staff report. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions in the staff report, testimony presented at the hearing, and findings in support of the application made by council during deliberations on this matter. And we go on to-
Is there a second?
And then to the second one.
A second, the motion.
So you'll do all, you'll do all three of them or just the one?
That's it. And then you can vote on that.
Thank you. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say, say no? Motion passes?
Okay, ordinance number two, I move the city council adopt an ordinance that would withdraw a 0.94 acre parcel located at 420 Clover Ridge Road Northeast from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District.
No, that's a different one. It's not the same, this is, there's another sheet for that. There's a blue sheet for that one.
I'm looking at this, it's on the same-
It's on the purple sheet.
Why do you put it on the purple sheets?
On the same purple sheet, there's-
That must be in there for the next hearing, for the annexation.
I don't know why they did that. It was for the next hearing.
We have to discuss that first.
No, we have, we're ahead of ourselves in that one.
So, and then we voted, got that done. The decision of the city council may be appealed for the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing notice of intent to appeal no later than 21 days after decision becomes final. Within five working days following the adoption of the amendment or new land, land use regulation, the director shall forward the department, to the Department of Land Conservation and Development, a copy of the adopted amendments and findings, and notify the Department of any substantial damages that may be occurred, that may have occurred, and proposal with, since previous notification to the department.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Recorder. I, I'm looking at the blue sheet, and it looks like your motion to a subdivision and site plan review is actually on the blue sheet. Error. So I believe the second motion on the blue sheet is your motion that, yeah. Somehow, two motions got crossed, one on each sheet.
You're killing me over there. Okay.
The motion for the subdivision is on, the second motion on the blue sheet.
I apologize. I apologize to the applicant and also to the staff for that.
So you'd like to make a motion?
So, yes, would, would the council like to make a motion?
The blue sheet now.
The second one on the blue sheet.
I move the city, I move the city council approve the subdivision and site plan review applications under planning files SD oh nine twenty-one and SP thirty-one twenty-one, as conditioned in the March seventh, twenty twenty-two staff report. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions in the staff report, testimony presented at the hearing, and findings in support of the application made by the city council during deliberations on this matter.
Is there a second? We have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Now, are we approving an ordinance or whatever?
No, we're doing the ordinance for the, they, they had it on the wrong sheet. It's the one we did before, we had it on the wrong sheet.
And are we voting to read it a second time in title only, or are we moving to approve an ordinance?
We, we've already read the ordinance, and, and we, we voted on reading it a second time and voted on that, and now we're just adopting it, so.
They put the motion on the wrong sheet.
Well, that's my question. If we, if we have the wrong motion, are we doing the right thing?
You have now, so we.
Should we start over again?
No, the, the first ordinance that I read was the ordinance for this subdivision. Then the sheets were put together, and they crossed, somehow put the, the wrong one on the sheet. So the first.
The first and second reading are solid.
First and second reading of the, of the ordinance are, are fine, right, and so we're, we're good there, so.
You're the expert.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I know, I know what we're talking about.
We're good, you'll vote aye?
Yes, I'll vote aye.
So motion passes. So it's six, zero. Gabe, you get that? You good? Okay. Now, next up, so am I using this sheet again? Cause now we gotta, now you, it's, it's, yeah. So is that, is that resolved with the subdivision?
Yep.
He's good to go?
Yeah, we're not modifying anything.
No, we're not modifying it.
So, okay, now, let me get back to the agenda. So the next on the agenda, so you're, you're passed. Yeah, you're good to go. You're all good. Thank, thank you for your patience. It was, we'll get it fixed, but thank you for your present, our patience.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your kind comments, and for the record, I need to point out, we, I have an excellent engineer and an excellent planner, and they are the reason you saw such great data. Okay?
Thank you very much. So next on the agenda is Taylor Annex, Annexation Requests, AN dash zero one dash twenty-one and ZZ zero three dash twenty-one. David Martino, pages two ninety-two to three twenty-five in your packet.
And so Mayor, the purple sheet is what will be going off of on this one.
The purple sheet now?
The purple sheet is the annex, is, is the annexation.
Okay, wait a minute.
We're, we're doing the motion, I'm sorry. So when we get to the motions, that's what they're using is the purple sheet, right?
This is purple?
This is blue, but the motions are on the purple sheet.
And this is it?
This is blue.
And this is purple?
Yes. So the annexation.
Looks pink to me.
So this is, we'll be using this public hearing document, and the motions are on this one.
So thank you for your patience, staff and guests. Next on our agenda is a legislative and quasi judicial public hearing regarding planning files AN dash zero, zero one dash twenty-one and ZC zero three dash twenty-one. The proposal is annexation of a point four, point nine four acre property with a zoning map amendment to a residential single-family RS five zone. The annexation will also remove property from the taxation, taxing district of the Albany Rural Fire District. And I call this meeting legislative quasi, quasi judicial public hearing at seven thirteen. If you wish to testify, there are three options available, which were described in the agenda. Do any members declare a conflict of interest? Hearing none. Do any members wish to declare a con, no, excuse me, didn't it. Do any members wish to report an ex parte contact? Do any members wish to report a site visit? Do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? Does anyone wish to challenge the city council's right to determine this ma, this matter, or the participation of any council member in the hearing and decision? If so, please raise your hand if you're intending, and attending in person. If you're attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. And if you are attending by phone, please turn on your, unmute yourself and state your name to be called upon. Hearing none. At this time, I call for a reading of the meeting procedures.
For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards that staff will describe, or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court.
Excellent. At this time, I call for a staff report from the project planner, David Martino.
Thank you. Good evening once again. This application is a request to annex a parcel of land that's zero point nine four acres, located at four twenty Clover Ridge Road in East Albany, together with a request to apply the RS five zone to the property. The property is currently located within the urban growth area and it's contiguous to the city limits on three sides. The applicant is Seth Taylor, represented by Land Use Planner Laura LaRocque of Udell Engineering. So the map on the left shows that the property is designated low-density residential in the Albany Comprehensive Plan. The map on the right shows that the property is bordered by RS six point five with some RS five zoning to the northeast. Property to the north still remains under Lynn County's jurisdiction and is zoned UGA, UGM twenty acre. So if you look at this map on the right, the ones that are colored white are the ones that are still in Lynn County's jurisdiction. So the process here is a type four process, and annexations are both a quasi judicial and legislative process. And the decision-making criteria for an annexation is in Development Code two point one one zero. And the zoning map amendment can be found in the Development Code under section two point seven four zero. So agencies were noticed, Lynn County was noticed, public notices went out prior to the Planning Commission public hearing. The Planning Commission held a hearing on this matter on March fourteenth and voted unanimously to pass along a recommendation of favor, in favor. And so tonight, we are here for a final decision by city council.
Thank you, David. You have more?
Just a couple more, real quick. Uh, the annexation request meets all four criteria. The property is eligible to annex, it's timely to annex since the site has access to public streets and utilities. Adequate planning has occurred in time, in terms of comprehensive plan map designation and anticipated future development, and is reasonable to annex, provided that the city council agrees with that determination. So the area that the applicant's property is located in consists of detached single-family homes. The areas to the south and west were subdivided over the past few years, and the properties to the north that are located within the city limits were subdivided between sixteen and twenty years ago. Most of the land is zoned RS six point five, however, properties to the northeast along Windy Avenue are zoned RS five. And it's reasonable to expect that the parcels that are still in Lynn County jurisdiction will be zoned RS five when they annex. So again, we sent out public hearing notice February eighteenth, staff report with exhibits was posted online March seventh. There was two notices published in the Albany Democrat Herald, March fourth and April first. And the site was posted on March seventh in two locations. And as of three PM today, we've received no written comments. So in conclusion, the subject property is eligible for annexation because it's contiguous to the city limits, it's located in the urban growth boundary, and it can be served with public services. So in conclusion, oh, one more thing. With the annexation, the subject property will also be removed from the taxing district of the Albany Rural Fire Protection District, which means you'll have two ordinances to consider tonight, one for the annexation and one for the withdrawal of the property from the Albany Rural Fire Protection. So in conclusion, the staff analysis finds that the availability of utilities and infrastructure make this property an ideal candidate for development within the city. So on balance, the evidence supports annexation and assigning the zoning designation of RS five to the subject property. I'm good. Any questions?
Uh, do any council members have clarifying questions regarding the staff report? Saying none. We will now take testimony from the applicant. Would the applicant please state your name, address, and make any comments you may have for the council?
Good evening. My name is Laura LaRocque with Udell Engineering and Land Survey. Our office address is six three East Astory in Lebanon, Oregon. Thank you for considering this application today. David did an excellent job, so I won't go on too far about this application. You have two parts before you this evening. The first part is a request to annex in property into the Albany city limits. As you can see from the map, the property is surrounded by Albany jurisdiction currently. It is well-served by public streets, public utilities, and can be adequately served by Albany Police Department and Albany Fire Department upon annexation. The second criteria before you is, is it timely? Timely just talks about, you know, does it have the ability to reasonably develop once it is in city limits? And for those safe reasons, we feel that it is timely. The second part of the application is the destination of the city zoning zone destination upon annexation. So this will remove the property from the county's zone destination and apply the city's zone destination. And the request is for RS five destination. RS five is in line with what surrounds the property and is also in line with what the Housing Needs Analysis and Building Land Inventory for the city has in store for the community, is talking about projected need to build future housing for the site. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation and answer any questions that the council has for me this evening.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. Next on the agenda, we will now be taking public testimony for the first, from those in favor of the application, followed by those in oppositions or with concerns, and finally, from anyone who is neutral. If anyone wishes to enter exhibit into this record, to be part of the testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and then email it to the email address provided in the packet. Those who registered to speak during the meeting will now be called upon to present verbal testimony. No one signed up, do I understand? Okay, we will now take in public testimony for those who did not register to speak beforehand. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand. If you are attending in person, if you're attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. Or if you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name to be called upon. Does any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of the application? Does any member of the audience wish to speak in opposition or express concerns about the application? Does any member of the audience wish to speak neutrally about the application? And there'll be, does, does the applicant have any rebuttal testimony? There's, since there's no discussion.
Mayor, this would be the good time to add that sentence, and does that, now does the council have any questions of the applicant?
So we need to update this then. Now, does the council have any questions for the applicant? Counsel? There's no questions for the applicant.
Is the applicant here?
Yeah, she's on the phone, she's on the screen. Yes.
So our parts are the applicant, is that correct?
Yes. No, no.
So you have any questions for her?
No.
So the council has no questions for the applicant, because she's speaking on behalf of the applicant. Does anyone in procedural, have any procedural questions they should like to raise at this time? If so, please raise your hand to be called upon if you're attending in person. If you're attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. Or if you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name, so you can be called upon. I declare this public hearing closed at seven twenty-four PM. Does the city council wish to discuss the case, ask questions of the staff? There are no, two ordinances for your consideration in the purple packet. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance proclaiming annexation and annexation in title only?
An ordinance proclaiming annexation of property identified on Lynn County Assessors Map Number eleven S dash zero three W dash zero four A B as tax lot three hundred and amending ordinance number four 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 one, which adopted the City of Albany Zoning Map by amending this Albany Zoning Map and adopting findings of fact and conclusions.
Would the counselor, would the counselor like to make a motion to read the ordinance a second time in title only?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed say no?
An ordinance proclaiming annexation of property identified on Lynn County Assessors Map Number eleven S dash zero three W dash zero four A B as tax lot three hundred and amending ordinance number four 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 one, which adopted the City of Albany Zoning Map by amending the Albany Zoning Map and adopting findings of fact and conclusions.
Will the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance proclaiming annexation?
I'll go ahead and read it, but this is off the purple sheet, right?
Off the purple sheet.
Okay.
That's it.
Ordinance number, I move the city council adopt an ordinance that would approve the land use application for annexation of concurrent rezone to RS five under planning files AN zero one twenty-one and ZC oh three twenty-one, as described in the March seventh, twenty twenty-two staff report. This motion is based on findings and conclusions in the staff report, testimony presented at the hearing, and the findings in support of the application made by the city council during deliberations on this matter.
Is there a second? And?
And.
Nope.
Nope, just the one at a time, right?
Yeah, one at a time.
That, so, the ordinance number two, we're not there yet.
Okay.
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 So.
Second.
I have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion passes? Okay, the next is the ordinance withdrawing property from the Albany Rural Fire District. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance in withdrawing the property from the Albany Rural Fire District in title only?
An ordinance withdrawing territory identified on Lynn County Assessors Map Number eleven S dash zero three W dash zero four A B as tax lot three hundred from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District.
I move we have the ordinance read a second time?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
An ordinance withdrawing territory identified on Lynn County Assessors Map Number eleven S dash zero three W dash zero four A B as tax lot three hundred from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District.
Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance withdrawing property from the Albany Rural Fire District?
I move the city council adopt an ordinance that would withdraw the zero point nine four acre parcel located at four twenty Clover Ridge Road North, Road Northeast from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District.
Is there a, a motion and a second? All those in favor say yes?
Aye.
Aye.
Gotcha.
Those opposed say no? Motion passes. The decision of the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal no later than twenty-one days after the decision becomes final. Within five working days following the adoption of the amendment or new land re, use regulation, the director shall forward to the Department of Land Conservation and Development, a copy of the adopted amendments and findings, and notify the Department of any substantial changes which may be, charts, changes which may occur, and proposal since the previous notification to the department. Back to the regular agenda. Thank you, David, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. If that's done. If that's done. So we got that done. So we have first reading ordinances, the number six on your agenda packet. Albany Municipal Code Title Seven Amendments, Christian Dell, pages thirty-three, twenty-six to three, twenty-eight on your packet. Uh, one A M C seven dot eight four dash two, six, zero, offensive littering. Would the city council, uh, city attorney read, read the ordinance entitled only?
Yes, Your Honor. An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code Chapter seven point eight four, Public nuisances by adding a new section titled seven point eight four point two, six, zero, offensive littering.
Will the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance a second time entitled only?
I would move to read the ordinance a second time entitled only.
A motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Okay. Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Oh, you gotta read it a second time.
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code Chapter seven point eight four, Public nuisances by adding a new section titled seven point eight four point two, six, zero, offensive littering.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you. Number two, A M C dash seven point eight four dash two, seven, zero, trespassing. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance entitled only?
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code Chapter seven point eight four, Public nuisances by adding a new section titled seven point eight four point two, seven, zero, trespassing.
Will the council like to make a motion to read the titles, uh, ordinance a second time entitled only?
Move that the ordinance should be read a second time entitled only.
Seconded.
There's a second. Motion and a second. City Attorney?
What the vote one more time, make sure it's unanimous.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no.
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code Chapter seven point eight four, Public nuisances by adding a new section titled seven point eight four point two, C is two, seven, zero, trespassing.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
Your motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you. City Attorney? Okay, the next one is A M C. Something's missing.
Franchise agreement.
Yeah, franchise agreement. I'm looking for A though.
Yep.
So next is a franchise agreement with Visor, Director Jaeger, pages three, twenty-nine through forty-four of your packet. Thank you, Director.
Good evening. Uh, tonight, staff is asking council to adopt a telecommunications franchise agreement with Visor. Uh, the city establishes franchise agreements with companies who wish to use the city's rights of way. We currently have agreements with Republic Services, Comcast, Pacific Power, Northwest Natural Gas, just to name a few. Although these agreements set a fee, or you could think of it as a rent for the use of the city's rights of way. Uh, we also address other important factors in this, such as construction, excavation, relocation, and hazardous substances. If you look at the headers in the ordinance, you can see what some of these different, uh, areas are that we, that we want to be able to control for the city. Uh, this Visor franchise ordinance we're asking council to adopt is in line with, uh, other telecommunications franchise agreements we have with companies of similar size. Uh, the fee is currently set at seven percent and there's a minimum quarterly payment of seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's really what I have. I would be happy to answer any questions. We also have representatives, uh, from Visor with us tonight if council has any questions for them.
Counsel?
Yes.
So Counselor Kupczynski?
Yes, I don't, I don't know who this gets directed to, maybe staff or, or, uh, representatives. But will they be co-locating, uh, their, uh, receivers, et cetera, on existing towers? Or they be building brand new towers?
Please come forward.
To both.
Please identify yourself, please. Could you please remove your hat and counsel?
Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, Cameron Blomquist, uh, President of Visor. Address, ten twenty-five Main Street, Amstoria, Oregon. Um, as far as, uh, co-location, I mean, this, we're building fiber, fiber optic lines, so it's not necessarily towers. But yes, co-located, uh, telk, like, uh, telephone poles, underground work, uh, and stuff like that.
Can you speak directly into the microphone because there's people online?
Yep.
Thank you.
Did that answer?
That answered my question.
Not much.
Can you please repeat that because people online can't hear it?
Okay, perfect. Um, so as far as, uh, co-locations, we're not necessarily doing any, uh, tower work. It'll be telephone lines. We're building fiber optic lines, so we're bringing fiber, fiber internet to, to Albany and, and, uh, trying to expand in Albany in that area. So co-location, yes, on poles, underground utilities.
How much is your guesstimate as to the time for build out before you start marketing?
Uh, six months.
Okay, six months. Counselor, any other questions? Counsel, are you done, Counselor? Any other questions, Counsel?
I do have one question.
Counselor Novak?
Is this the sort of situation where then people who make use of your service, you charge them a fee in order to recoup your funds that you're paying for the city, um, for the use of the right of ways and all that? So if someone uses Visor services, you're going to charge them X amount on each bill?
Correct.
Okay, and that is how you recoup what you pay to the city?
Yes, correct.
So it comes out of the rate payer's pocket. I just wanted to confirm this is like that.
Right, and so we do it, do it both ways, actually. It just depends on the area. It's either built into the plan price or it's just a, an additional, uh, tax item.
Thank you.
Any other, Counselor? Okay, would the city attorney please read the ordinance entitled only?
An ordinance adopting chapter three point nine five of the Albany Municipal Code, A M C, and granting a non-exclusive telecommunications system franchise to Visor for the construction and operation of a telecommunications system and fixing terms, conditions, and compensation of such franchise.
Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance a second time entitled only?
Move we read this motion a second time entitled only.
Is there a second? You have a second, Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. So all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. To the attorney?
An ordinance adopting chapter three point nine five of the Albany Municipal Code, A M C, and granting a non-exclusive telecommunications systems franchise to Visor for the construction and operation of a telecommunications system and fixing terms, conditions, and compensation of such franchise.
Thank you. Would the council like, say again, would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move we adopt the ordinance adopting chapter three point nine five of the Albany Municipal Code, A M C, and granting a non-exclusive telecommunications system franchise to Visor for the construction and operation of a telecommunications system and fixing terms, conditions, and compensation of such franchise.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Did you get everyone? Good, thank you. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, item seven, adoption of re- resolution eliminating library late fees. Director Ikanoi is pages three, forty-five and three, fifty-one of your packet. So does, you, do you have a staff report?
Sure.
Thank you.
Counsel, um, good evening. As you have seen in the packet, we have a resolution to no longer char- charge late fees for overdue library items. There's a lot of information in the packet. I don't know if you have any questions, but just have a brief, maybe, uh, summary of it for you. Um, in the last eight years or so, libraries across the country have kind of had a reckoning when it comes to library fines. As a public institutions, we promote service and access to our citizens. But then we instill a punitive fine on patrons for not returning an item, thus denying them access and service that are our core values. For many like myself, a library fine is no more than an annoyance, uh, because my daughter maybe cleaned her room and threw the books in the closet and we didn't see them. But for others, library late fees are, are truly a barrier to entry. Library fees impact the patrons that are the most vulnerable, the low-income families that depend on the library for books to supplement their education, uh, or movies or television shows that can only be seen otherwise with, uh, costly monthly subscriptions. You know, there's also many libraries, as I said, for the past eight years, libraries have been doing this. So, um, many libraries have seen an actual, uh, increase in library usage. They've seen an increase in circulation. They've seen more patrons come into the library. And purportedly because they don't, the, uh, patrons don't have to worry about fees or late fees. And removing late fees is also one of the opportunities that we have where it's, it's something we can do that benefits the public, but it's also a, a practical thing as well. Um, as I have shared, the revenue for the last couple of years from late fees is negligible at best. And the time spent by both library and finance staff to process the late fees doesn't cover, you know, what, what we do, uh, what we would collect. A phrase that often gets, uh, thrown around when, when talking about this is, it's one of those instances where you're, we're spending dollars to collect dimes, so, um, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Uh, Counsel, any questions or comments for Director Ikanoi? Uh, Counselor Benson C. Johnson was first, and then I'll come back to you, Counselor Novak. Counselor Johnson?
Yes, um, I just want to state that I am totally against this. I think to change, I mean, the amounts that we got in, it says last year was seven thousand, but the last, uh, pre-pandemic was like thirty thousand to forty thousand annually. Um, we're always saying, we don't have any money. We can't do this. You know, it's like, hey, this is, um, anybody that can get in there to get a book, can get in there to re- return it. And if you aren't responsible enough to do it, yeah, you pay fine. And to me, this is like lowering standards and it's like giving away to where, um, you know, why should people do anything if, if there's no consequences? I'm, I, I was just so surprised when this came out, and I don't care what New York City does. We, you know, this is something that it's not an extra fee that we put on everybody. It's just the people who aren't responsible enough to take it back. I myself had to pay for a book because I used to like to read in the bathtub. And I dropped the book. I fell asleep, so I paid for the book. And so I just, I think this is just a terrible idea. I mean, it's not an extra fee on everybody. It's just those who aren't responsible enough to, um, do what they're supposed to do. And that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novak, you were next up.
Yes, uh, thank you. I confess, when I first saw this about getting rid of library fees, I thought the same thing that Counselor Johnson said because to me, that's just, it's a responsible thing to do. If you borrow the book, you bring it back, and if you're late, you pay the little fine and that encourages you to get it in on time next time. But when you say that we're spending dollars to recoup dimes, that makes me look at it a little bit differently. I, I had a question with regard to, and forgive me if it's in the paperwork and I missed it. There was just so much information, this go around my head exploded.
It's a huge packet.
So I, I might have missed it. I'm curious as to how much we've lost in, for instance, somebody dropping the book into the bathtub and not paying for it. How much, you know, how much do we lose to damage? And the other thing I want to say, because I was really surprised, forgive me, I could be remembering things sideways. But I thought, growing up, that just by virtue of the fact that I lived in Albany, I, I got a library card and we didn't, I don't remember being charged for it. So that's where I thought the free service came in. I thought if you lived in, I know when I lived in Southern California, I got library cards because I was part of this county and this whatever, and I didn't have to pay for them. I just had to show them that I was indeed a resident. So I was kind of surprised to learn that, that we charge. I understand that they're getting a benefit in that they're getting movies that they don't have to rent from some other company and they get the books and they get the services, but that kind of surprised me. And maybe it's been going on forever and I'm just out of the loop because I never have time to go to libraries anymore and I love libraries. So anyway, sorry.
No problem. Can I respond?
Yes, please.
So a couple of points of clarification. One, this, um, so, uh, Counselor Johnson, your example of dropping the book into the bathtub, uh, we will still be charging people for dropping books into the bathtub or any other body of water that they, that they happen to drop the material in. Though, the, those fees will not go away. Any, any library materials that are.
Destroyed.
Destroyed, um, or ride off into the sunset, those, those will be, those will still be charged.
Oh.
So, so it's, 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 it is, it is only the fine for items that are returned late, uh, that we're asking.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, yeah. And then, um, for your response, I think maybe what, what, what you saw in the packet is we have a non-resident fee. And that is, yeah, it's.
So it's only non-residents?
It's only non-residents. And, and I apologize, and council actually, uh, approved changing the non-resident fee about a year, over a year ago.
I remember that.
And, um, it was in two different places in our policy, so it needed to be updated in this policy as well. But that, that fee went up from forty, from four, to eighty dollars from forty dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson, you have any other comments? Counselor Bartholomew, Olson?
There was one question that hasn't been addressed, and perhaps it's because I went on too long and I apologize. It was how much loss do we have, generally speaking?
That, that, that can be kind of a tricky question to, to answer as far as actual, uh, physical loss of items. Um, it, it's, um, well, one thing we do to recoup the costs is, is if, if an item is lost, we do have, we do send, uh, someone to collections and we are able to recoup a fair amount from that.
Okay.
Um, you know, we're, we're, we're not talking about any huge numbers. I mean, as I say, but like the seven thousand dollars, those are late fees just from the last two years. So it's, um, but as far as lost items, that's a pretty, I would say, I, I, I don't want to estimate too greatly on that number, but it's, it's not, it's not a tremendous amount. And we do have a pretty good way of recouping those costs, so.
Thank you.
So Director, um, Counselor Johnson has another question or comment.
Yeah, it, it, the, the thirty thousand to forty thousand annually that I was looking at is how many, how many books can you buy for thirty to forty thousand dollars? I know it goes to general fund, but maybe it's something that should go just be redirected to the library because, um, that could help with your expenses. And that's where I'm.
Certainly, um, you know, I, I, I understand that, that, um, concern and, uh, about, you know, about the funds because as, you know, much of my job is spent, uh, trying to, trying to get money from other sources. We, we spend a lot of time, uh, fundraising, applying for grants. I mean, in the, in the past, you know, we, we average between seventy-five and eighty thousand dollars a year in, in, in grants that, and, you know, as I talk to my staff, you know, if there's a, the ability to apply for a grant for a ream of paper, we'll do it. Um, and to me, that's a, a better use of my staff's time. And also i- it, it doesn't put a punitive burden upon the patrons.
Are you good, Counselor?
Well, I just don't see where, I mean, uh, it's again, you know, it, if you go into the library and get free book, you can take it out, and if you can't bring it back, you know, that's your responsibility and I don't see, it, it's like everything else in the country anymore. We're giving everything away. Like, well, okay, because you're, you're poor, you're this or that, you, you don't, you don't have to be responsible. And so, um, that's why I'm just so against this.
All right, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. So with that, would the council like to make a motion?
Nothing to have read a first time, so I make a motion, uh, resolution, council adopt new fine and fee schedule for the Albany Public Library.
Is there a second? Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
No.
Motion passes five to one. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Counsel.
Next up is, um, what is that? Award of Contracts, uh, Eagle View and Wishroom Water Line, W L dash twenty-two dash zero five. Andrew Monaco, pages three, fifty-two to three, fifty-five in your packet.
Good evening, Mayor and Counselors.
Thank you. Good evening.
On March 16th, 2022, we opened six bids for WL-2205, Eagleview and Wishroom Water Line. The low bidder was ML Hawk Construction Company from Salem, Oregon. The scope of this project includes installation of approximately 3,800 feet of four-inch water line on Eagleview and Wishroom Drives in North Albany. In addition to the water line construction, this project includes installation of water meters, services, and related equipment. The existing water lines are deteriorated, and replacing the water lines will increase system reliability and reduce the number of emergency responses to required to fix leaks. Staff recommends Counsel award a contract in the amount of 646,297 dollars to ML Hawk Construction Company of Salem, Oregon, for construction of the Eagleview and Wishroom Water Line.
Counsel, any discussion?
This is the next, even, I think it was the last meeting we had, this is another bid process that's gone through, that has come in very, very nicely under what we had estimated was going to happen, with the cost, everything rising so fast, how are we getting so lucky?
We're, I'm gonna just say, we just got lucky. It's a matter of timing with what contractors have on the books and what they want to do.
So, so there's a performance bond with this? I mean, it requires that they
Yes, yep.
Okay, good.
We'd like those pipes to stay in the ground. Thank you. Counsel, any other questions for Mr. Monaco? Counselor Olson has a question.
Do we know how old the pipe is that's being replaced? Any idea?
I should know off the top of my head. I, I think it was put in, I believe in the seventies, if I'm remembering right, but that is off the top of my head.
Wasn't that orange berg kind of pipe, was it? I guess that was sewer line.
This was not orange berg, it's asbestos cement
Okay.
Water line.
I'm glad you're replacing.
Would the Counselor like to make a motion?
Let's see, is it a ordinance, or is it just a
It's a word of contract.
I move we approve the bid, the low bid.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Counselor Johnson, you have an aye or no?
That was an aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no? Motion passes, six, nothing. Thank you. B is Jefferson Street and First Avenue Water Line, WL-22-01, Chris Sirlooski, we're bringing that, pages 356 to 359 in your packet. Did I say your name properly?
It's Sirkluski.
Sirkluski, okay, thank you. I will never make that mistake again.
I always say it's just like it looks.
Okay.
Good evening. Staff is recommending that we award a contract for WL-2201 to Pacific Excavation Incorporated of Eugene, Oregon. On March 15th, we opened six bids for this project, ranging from 928,425 to just over 1.2 million. The engineer's estimate was 900,000. This project consists of two schedules. Schedule A includes replacing 1,100 feet of two and four-inch water lines on Jefferson Street between First and Second, First and Sixth Avenue, with new six and eight-inch diameter water lines. The existing pipes are very old and leaking, and do not provide adequate fire flow or domestic water service. The schedule is about 48,000 dollars over budget, getting back to the bidding climate here, but that's a fairly small amount, and we have adequate reserves to cover that. There's a second schedule that was bid as part of this project as Schedule B. During the design of the Jefferson Street improvements of the existing four-inch water line on First Avenue that was installed in 1890, suffered several significant leaks within a few months, and one of those leaks, they dug up the pipe, and they found it had been repaired seven times already in that same spot, and they actually had to remove several feet of the pipe, just to take all the repairs out.
Wow.
So evidently, we've gotten our money's worth out of that pipe, it's like 130-some years old. So because of the emergency nature of that, and the Jefferson Street water line is going on at the same time, we initiated an emergency project to tack onto this project that's right next to it, to go ahead and get that replaced. We have adequate reserves in the water fund to pay for that work, and that, that extra work on First Avenue is 675,000 dollars of the contract.
So we have adequate reserves to cover everything?
Correct.
Okay. Counsel, any follow-up questions for Mr. Sirkluski?
I said it right.
Would the Counselor like to make a motion?
I move to award the contract as presented for the repairs on First Avenue and Jefferson Street.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say, those opposed say no? Motion passes six, nothing, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next on the agenda is adoption of the consent calendar, would any Counselor like to make a motion?
I'd move to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Okay, next is business from the Council. So I started on this end last time, let's start this side over here. Counselor Johnson, you go first.
Okay, I just want to, first of all, say that along with the city manager, I, I really want to say, I'm sorry to CJC leave, I remember the first time I saw him, we were in council chambers, and I saw this young man out there in his bow tie, and I thought, I don't know what it was, but some, for some reason, I thought, this young man is going somewhere, and he sure did a good job for us, and it, is, did he leave already?
Is he still here?
He's not here.
He's gone. Peter kicked him.
Oh, I was gonna, I was gonna call him JK one more time, just for But anyway, I don't know if we have to, we missed this last year, and we never did have an audit report put on the agenda. I mean, the audit report was good and everything, but I don't know if we have to formally give a report and say that, or if I could just say right now, as, you know, a member of it or chair that, the audit came back very good, and there were no problems.
We did, Counselor Johnson, I think you were not here. We did that, yeah, we did do that. We had, we had an audit meeting. We have not done that, Director? Okay, I stand corrected, as Director, you look at me like I'm crazy, so, so we have to get, do we need to get that on agenda soon? Okay, you can go ahead and report out on it, Counselor Johnson, if you'd like to.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, we, I've got my, got my tablet here. We met on 2/24/22, and the, it was just a positive report, any problems that were in the past had been totally corrected. The negative was the PERS amount went from 60.5 million to 75.5 million, so it's a 24.2% of payroll, so hopefully that may get better in the future, from what he said that, that it might. Overall, there was no weakness in the internal control, no non-compliances with financial statements, and so basically, we got a gold star for our audit this year, which is very good, and it's a, I mean, it's just, the gold stars for staff, they did it, and they do a good job, so just wanted to make sure that we got that in. So with that, that's, I think that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor Johnson. What is that right there? Oh, it's a cat, I'm like, I'm thinking like, alien just climbed up on your desk, okay.
Oh, she came in from outside, and she can't stand me being in a meeting without her, so.
Thank you, thank you, you had me freaking out there, thank you. Counselor Bartholomew?
Um, yes, I was able to speak with Ms. Tina Vanderberg, who lives next door to Albany Helping Hands, and she is concerned about the new easement that will give parking to Helping Hands, because there is, she says that it's difficult for her to get out of that, that driveway, so I will be following up with that and talking to staff.
Okay, thank you. Counselor, Counselor Olson, you have anything?
Oh, yes, I'm sure it's been distracting, my fiddling around with these earphones and et cetera, and some of you may know that I suffer from a heavy-duty case of tinnitus, and have a difficult time hearing what's going on on the dais here. But strangely, Bessie comes through loud and clear, and I can hear her just fine, and I can hear people that talk into that microphone, they're just fine. It seems to be people talking into these plug-in microphones that are, kind of sound like they're talking inside a big barrel or some kind of thing, and I, I would sure like to find some way that we could go back to the old PA system, or do something that those of us who are kind of handicapped could hear a little bit better, so.
Thank you.
I, I apologize for the fiddling around with this thing, and I'm sure it's a distraction, so, anyway, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. Counselor Smith?
There we go. Wanted to, I had a question about something that Mr. Quinn said earlier regarding the million-dollar grant that we received from the state legislature, that I don't believe that's federal money, that's state money, but also, that's coming before the Community Development Commission on Monday.
Correct.
So it is, it is something that, it was a timely remark
Right.
For our consideration. The other thing was, in reviewing the YMCA Child Center, I'm curious to know the hours of operation.
Eight to five.
Okay, thank you. I think that does it for me, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a correction, sir.
What?
With regard to the hours of operation, it says right on the front of their building, 6:30 in the morning to 7:00 in the evening.
That's what I got from the person that was here earlier, so I stand corrected, thank you. Counselor Kobczynski?
Nothing this evening.
Counselor Novak?
Um, yes, two things, and I will be brief. One, oh, I can't remember how, just a few meetings ago, we talked about some trees in Hackelman Park that had fallen down, and a sweet lady left something on the dais last week that I didn't see in time to comment. She just wanted to correct the timing of the two trees falling in Eleanor, Eleanor Park. She said the first was on December 20th, and the second was on the 2nd of March, about nine weeks later, so I wanted to make that correction, since she went to the trouble to request it. And then I also would like to say how grateful I am to live in a town where the mayor takes the concerns of the citizens to heart. I was really touched to know that you went to the DeRosa household, and that you witnessed their situation, and I'm also really grateful to you, our city manager, for what you said, that you're going to work with Officer Shindel and the folks at the Y, who are doing a good thing, but that you're going to work together to find a way to mitigate that noise and make life better for these folks. So I just want to say how much I appreciate that, how, how blessed I feel to be part of a community where people will show that degree of care and concern, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Novak. If I were the mayor contest was fantastic, by the way, just so you know. We had 60 wonderful young people submit their posters to the city, we had great people come out and do the contests, evaluations of those posters, we, we had a great celebration with the kids that submitted applications through, or essays, and also for the middle school people, and the youth, the elementary school students at the Riverside Community Center. Counselor Smith came out and joined us, and I will say that the young lady that won the eighth, the fourth grade competition, the fourth and fifth grade competition was shocked, we presented her award yesterday, and the person, the eighth grade person that came out, and she won the contest, her mother was, it was absolutely priceless. So I've invited them to come out to a city council meeting, to the eighth grader to read her essay, Michaela Chafens, to read her essay to council, it's two pages, and it's a really good job by one of our young students, and she goes to North Albany, I believe, is that correct, Matt? And the other one is Brenlee Washburn, she won the poster competition, and she goes to Liberty Elementary School, and so I'm looking forward to you guys seeing the work, but if you'd like to see all the posters, Matt Harrington actually put all the posters in the library, and so you can go take a look at them, and I think you'll like what you see. These young kids did a really great job of showing what they'd like to see from the city of Albany. And other than that, I'm getting a lot of requests for the lineup for River Rhythms online, and so I told them not to talk to me about it, come down and talk to the staff about it, and other than that, I think I'm good, so city manager, your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I have that lineup for you right now, but first, let me just say that the million dollars, Counselor Smith is right, is part of state money, 14 million dollars that was awarded to 14 different cities, and staff have been working on, working with our human service organizations within the city to try to determine how best to allocate that money among them. Counselor Olson, it's certainly not a distraction, I'm glad the headset, I hope the headset works. The upgrades to our system in the council chambers were to the video system, not to the audio system, so it's still the same old audio system, we'll continue to try to look for ways to improve that.
Well, these are different
They're different micropho, they're different mics, there's a, there's a several, we're using different ones here tonight than we had last.
So are those portables there?
These are portable, these are wireless.
I think they're far better than these plug-in types.
We can change it out for you.
Pardon?
So.
Thank you.
I wanted to thank Counselor Johnson for the kind words about JC, we, JK, we will all miss JK very much. Also wanted to apologize for the confusion between purple and blue pages, there are purple and blue motions, we will, we'll fix that. So July 7th is Sheena Easton. July 21st is Blue Oyster Cult. July 28th is Ruthie Foster, who is a blues and folk artist. And then tomorrow and Friday, you can look forward to hearing the final two for the lineup.
Oh, you're killing me, okay.
Okay, and I, Mayor, since you have given me the opportunity, I'd like to ask Seth, you, you all have raised the question about TLT associated with VRBOs, so the staff have been working on that, and I'd like Seth to comment, just to give you an update.
Good evening, Mayor and Counselors, this is on?
Thank you, yes, it is.
Counselor Olson?
That's fine.
Okay. Just briefly, it sounds like it might be helpful for Number U to just get a recap of where we're at with the TLT collection, transient lodging tax collections, in particular respect to the non-traditional intermediaries, as we call them, like Airbnb's and VRBOs and so forth. A number of years ago, about the time that I came on staff here, there was a desire from the different lodging partners here and providers to make sure that when the time was right, we could collect transient lodging tax from those other intermediaries that we're not currently collecting from, such as Airbnb and so forth. So at that time, we actually updated the, the code to allow for that, but there was no, no desire to go out and create a, a program that required a lot of staff time to both enforce and collect, and, and what we've known to those different intermediaries, and what we've seen elsewhere in the country and in the state, not in the least being our partners across the way, it took Corvallis something like three years to negotiate a remittance agreement with Airbnb alone as one intermediary, to actually have them remit those taxes that local, local housing or providers were collecting. So the idea at the time was, we knew that there was a program So the idea at the time was we knew that there was a program coming from the Department of Revenue at the state. They were gonna try to pilot, they'd been gotten funding for, to actually collect on our behalf. Because right now, any intermediary is, is paying some transient lodging tax to the, to the state. So it's very easy for them to then also collect our local portion and remit those back to us. So two things needed to happen. A, we needed to sign up for that program. And B, make sure that our code matched the state's requirements for them to collect on our behalf. So we underwent the process, um, last year, I think the second quarter of last year was the first year that the Department of Revenue started this pilot program, actually collecting on behalf of cities. And at the time, there was only two or three that had signed up. I think everyone was sort of waiting to see how it was gonna go. By the end of last year, there's something like ten now. So if you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, yeah, there's ten now. We've actually been reaching out to all those municipalities individually to see what their experience is like because we're not in a hurry to get into a, a, a situation where the state's collecting on our behalf, but say they're not remitting for six months or something like that when we have needs for that revenue on a more frequent basis. So we're waiting to get a little more feedback from those, from those municipalities right now. And then the other thing is, as more people join, the cost for DOR to provide that service would fluctuate somewhat. Go down, basically, you know, they have fixed costs and so the more participants, the lower the number is. And we also didn't wanna, um, propose something where rates would change significantly and we'd be saddled to higher administrative costs than what we'd anticipated. So letting, letting the, the dust settle a little bit, see how other communities are faring with that program. I would anticipate by the end of next quarter, we should have a good proposal for you, whether you wanna go ahead and use the Department of Revenue's, uh, collection program for, for those taxes. And just one additional note on that, um, this would actually remove much of our local administrative burden for collecting TLT in general because it would apply to other, uh, transient or, or lodging, transient lodging tax providers as well, such as our local hotels. So that's it. If there's any more questions for me.
Well, that's, that's all I wanted to hear from you. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I'm, I'm speaking for the, you guys all good with that? It sounds like we're good. Thank you.
Um, one question. The AVA and the ADA both get a percentage of the TLT. And I just, I'm wondering if it goes through a state system or whatever you just said. Forgive me, I'm getting tired.
I know.
Are they still going to get that percentage to do the things they do?
Well, I think we're, we're putting two issues together that are related but not directly related because the use of our local transient lodging tax dollars are governed by a policy and a budget. And that budget dictates who uses the TLT revenue dollars. But in this case, we're really talking about the collection of that revenue in general and not the allocation of it locally. Does that make sense?
Today, we're just dealing with the collection of it. The other part comes in that later. Yeah.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
I'm starting to just slide.
Question.
Thank you, Seth.
Counselor Olson has a question.
How do we decide how the, uh, TLT is allocated? The TLT committee?
Counselor Olson, that discussion is not for tonight. He just talks to me about giving us feedback on the collection of it. We have it coming up for another topic to talk about the allocation.
So, um, talking about the TLT itself is freerboating at this point?
Yeah, no, yeah, this, it's just, it's a circular argument. So we have budget stuff to talk about. And he's looking at collecting the fees and then the allocation we'll address later.
We were responding to.
That's my question.
He's responding to.
We were responding to a question from several of you about, uh, VRBOs, vacation rentals by owner, such as Airbnb and where we stand with collecting transient lodging tax from, from those entities.
Right.
And that's what Seth is doing.
So would you bring, have him bring back allocation?
So, well, when are we going to talk about how the TLT is allocated?
Yeah, that's part of the budget process. And when the TLT, uh, and I don't know if you care to comment, Seth, on, I mean, this is really not, I didn't ask him to come here to talk about that tonight, but if you're.
We can do this very briefly, though, Counselor Olson.
So, so do we wait, uh, a year and some before we discuss any of that?
That's correct. I, and Seth, go ahead if you want.
No, that's, that's fair, but very brief answer to your question, Counselor Olson.
I think that's unfortunate.
What part of it is, can you, can you elaborate?
I think it's unfortunate that we can't talk about TLT until a year plus, whenever our next budget committee meeting is.
Well, the expenditures of TLT are part of the budget that the council approved, so if you, I, I suppose it's theoretically possible to go back and change what you've approved, but it's part of an improved budget.
So the budget can be modified, uh, before the next budget committee meeting?
Counselor Olson, I'd just add that the, much of the use of the TLT dollars is loosely directed by the TLT policy. But I think before the next budget cycle, we'll have an opportunity to talk about that policy and some revisions that will actually deal with unforeseen circumstances, uh, such as the, the COVID pandemic and that kind of thing. So there's probably opportunity to talk about allocation and use of those dollars before the next budget cycle.
So is that your decision or is that the manager's decision or the finance director's?
That's, that's our decision, Counselor Olson.
Is it our decision? I think it's the council's decision.
It is.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, it's our decision. Thank you, Seth.
You're welcome.
Uh, Peter, do you have anything else?
Just two more things. One, I'd like to ask Sean to, and it looks like Counselor Johnson has a question.
Counselor Johnson?
I did, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch Seth before last. Do we, with the checking with the other, um, agencies and stuff, have we, uh, have we heard of what the cost is gonna be? To, to me, that is one important thing. And also then you, you're ta, talking about, well, we don't have to check on them or audit them or something like that. So, you know, we lose control that way, but you know what the cost is, Seth?
Yeah, so currently, the, the administrative cost is ten dollars per vendor, so pretty low in actual fact. Um, by statute, you can only use five percent of the taxes collected for administrative costs. And so the state falls under that as well. And when we were looking at what the scope, the, the potential spectrum of cost would be, um, again, they couldn't give us an exact number because it depended on participants, but right now it's well within that spectrum and probably below what it costs us. Um, but again, not exactly sure on that just yet because we don't know where that, that actual number will land.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Seth. Thank you, Counselor Johnson. So, Peter, do you have anything else?
Yes, sir. Uh, as we get back into the, uh, the habit of meeting in the chambers and we get adjusted or acclimated to the, the hybrid setting, I asked Sean if he would provide a little bit of a reminder about the importance of avoiding serial meetings. So I'd turn it over to you, Sean.
This is your, your, I guess, uh, biannual, or not biannual, but semi-annual, uh, reminders on certain things. And yeah, so yeah, Peter wanted me to briefly talk tonight about just reminding about trying to avoid serial meetings because in, in a serial meeting, meaning that if we have, uh, smaller groups of, of council members talking about a topic that's going to be the subject of a public meeting later and then we, we, we get together, we start talking about it, then they start talking on, you know, to other, other council members about it. The, the main, um, problem would be emails. Um, and so we just wanna make sure that when, when you have, the council receives an email, that you, the first thing is never, never hit reply all. That should be like, just try to keep that in mind. Never hit reply all to an email because then you are, you're having a conversation with the entire council outside of the public, which is a violation of the law. Um, and, and it sounds like it's, you know, not a big deal, but the law says you can't do that as elected officials. Um, the other in, in, and that includes sending, like I said, sending an email, sending letters, anything like that. And I say that, that to something that's going to come before the council, but it doesn't even have to be something that's gonna come before the council. It could be really anything. And so we, we pulled up the statute tonight and I wanted to just, you know, quickly read it. So under the, the Oregon revised statute one ninety-two, six thirty, it says, "All meetings of the governing body of a public meeting shall be open to the public and all persons shall be permitted to attend any meeting except as otherwise provided." Now, the next part that says, "A quorum of a governing body may not meet in private for the purpose of deciding on or deliberating towards a decision on any matter." And I think the, the hook there is to say that they, a, a quorum may not meet in private. The, the term, the word meet. And I think when, when the council or sometimes when anybody thinks of the word meet, they think, well, they were all getting together. But in this day and age, getting together can be on a telephone, on an email, on.
Social media.
Social media, uh, on a blog, comments, anything like that. Um, some of you were here when we were, I don't wanna say, I'll say it. Well, some of you were here when we were kinda burned on that at Luba a few years ago when we were, we were remanded back on Luba because a council member at that point had, had commented on, on something and had gotten, we had gotten remanded back on, had to redo a hearing because of it. Um, it doesn't have to be, though, a land use hearing. Um, it could be anything that, um, you know, that we're talking about, whether it be a quasi judicial or a legislative, uh, you know, decision. So I would just remind people, uh, remind the council to try to avoid that if at all possible. And I've actually, uh, talked to some of the staff about trying to make sure they don't hit, send a, an email out to the entire council at one time because that doesn't, they don't intentionally, but it, it's somewhat inviting to respond back to it that way. So, uh, for staff, for as an example, if they're going to send out a, uh, an email to the council, even though it's a pain, it's better to send it out individually, to send one out to Counselor Kobsinski and one to Counselor Novak, one to Counselor Smith. And that way, if they do hit reply all, they're only replying to one person still because not everybody's attached to that email. Um, and I know that can be a, a.
You could, you could do it by ward, too. There's only two in each ward.
You can do it by ward, uh, exactly. You could do that, too. And so, anyway, that was just a, just a reminder that I do probably once or twice a year, so.
Counselor Olson has a comment?
Yeah, so, uh, what do you, uh, consider constitutes a quorum? Four people?
In this case, yes.
So three of us could, uh, talk about the blue sky or whatever.
You could, well, you could talk about, yeah, you could, I mean, if you guys are at a party, if you're at a Halloween party or a Christmas party or something like that, that's not prohibited. Um, we, the, the staff here goes kind of what I, what I think is a good thing, but over and above to be cautious when the council's gonna get together, say for the Veterans Day parade and be on a float, just to let, let the public know, hey, the whole council's gonna be on the float, just let me know, but no business is going to be discussed at the, at the, uh, at the party or whatever it is. Um, I think we had a training a few years ago at the fire station, at the new fire station, and we did that. Um, but I would still be cautious to have two or three people meeting on a topic because if that's the case and then you, you, you're bringing one more person in, now we're, we're having a meeting outside of public. And, and also the other part of that statute towards a deliberation where you may not think you're, well, we're not deciding anything tonight, but when you're putting, when you discuss it, it is moving towards a deliberation at some point. And, um, because it will come before the whole body at some point. And your mind is being slowly made up or being persuaded good, one way or the other while we're having those meetings sometimes, so. Um, but again, yeah, just friendly, semi-annual reminder there.
Thank you very much.
And I'm always, and, and again, if there's ever a question on any of that stuff, you're always, um, invited to give me a call or, uh, an email, whatever, and, and we can talk about whatever it is and try to, you know.
Thank you.
Answer questions.
So, Peter, is that it?
Uh, that's it. One thing, um, in a minute, when you're gonna, you're gonna adjourn, uh, the meeting, I wanted to remind people that when you reconvene, and I would recommend maybe five-minute break, but when you reconvene, uh, that it's gonna be a different link. So if you're watching, uh.
You hear that, Counselor Johnson?
Virtually.
That's you.
Yes, I was gonna ask for a, a little break so that I could change, uh, my, my Zoom.
Yes.
I'm gonna Zoom, too.
Thank you.
Zoom out and back in.
And that really is all I have. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna adjourn the meeting. The next meeting dates is Monday, November, April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two at four P.M. is a work session. And Wednesday, April twenty-seventh, six P.M., uh, it's a meeting, a city council meeting. Now I'll adjourn the meeting and I'll see you all on the other side in five minutes. See you in a few minutes, Counselor Johnson.